I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we only have one item on the agenda and I will turn it over to Mrs. Bowles.
Okay, I did make copies of the pages that had changes. So to not waste, I stopped after page fourteen because there were no changes after that. So what I did was I went through everyone's feedback that was provided and made the changes in blue for you to look at. And everyone's recommendations, I thought, were very good. And so I went ahead and made them. And if I had a question about someone's, I called you. The one thing, the two major things I would say is Robert's Rules of Orders being all laid out. Most of you were like, "Take it out." Like, "It's a lot, take it out."
It was intense.
Which I'm totally fine with. And then, under school committee norms, check school department email regularly. A lot of you wanted that but weren't quite sure where the best place to put it was. So originally, it had been under responsibilities. And then some of you thought it should go under norms. I don't really care where it goes, but I think it should be somewhere. And then, on the last page, under additional comments, and I actually think this is really good and should be added, but wanted your feedback. Should we include something that explains the rules? Specifically, if you're the board chair, this is what the board chair does, so that it's laid out for everyone. This is what a vice chair does, and this is what committee chairs. So when I think of Bev coming in and becoming chair of one of the subcommittees, you know, does she know what to do, other than me meeting with her and explaining it to her? How would she know that? You know, should those three things be put in the handbook? And I think it's a good suggestion, and I think they should. So I would recommend we add that as well.
I agree.
To it. Was everyone okay with the blue?
Yes, although, I'm sorry, although I do have a question, just hence being, not necessarily for myself, but anybody being new. Do you feel that having the Robert's Rules of Orders in there, so that they actually know, like, what they should do and or could do is best? And or should we hand out it separate?
I think-
Does it not belong in the handbook and could just be on its own?
I think it could be on its own, or it could be in the binder you guys had talked about. Because now we've talked about two things.
Yeah.
Because there are parts and pieces of Robert's Rule of Orders that is in here. That's for larger boards, too, is the other thing. Because you're a board of five, there are some pieces of this that wouldn't even apply. So I think having it separate is fine, or if it's in the big handbook.
I was just thinking that, like, for other, you know, new members down the road, that like, you know, I've been in other groups and other committees, and we've used those rules. So I mean, I was familiar, but maybe not even with all of them. But then other people might have questions.
No idea.
No, I remember my first meeting, I didn't even know how to-
Right, and then even when I was reading through those, like, some of them, I was like, "Oh, I don't really know, you could do that, like, that's interesting." And then this is how you would go about doing it. I'm just saying, they could be useful tools. I know we're only five, but still sometimes it could, there are bits and pieces that could be useful tools to-
I wonder if maybe you could do like a, like a refer, and then put like, a good website source? So that you don't have to have all that, yeah, so that not all that has to be printed, but like, people know exactly where to go to find it. Or like even like a QR code, because you can get like a free QR code created online, so people can just scan it with their phone, and it takes you right to it, so that it becomes our responsibility. And then maybe once it's finished, we send an email to Amy and the board chair that just says, "I have completed reading this. If you have questions, here they are," kind of thing. So that, you know, we've checked in, and it's the responsibility of everybody to read it. But it doesn't necessarily have to be printed in this manner.
I love printed. Personally, like, I would love to see it. So in our binder, we'll have the MSVA, MSMA, MSBA, whichever one it is. That handbook, and then a separate tab with Robert's Rules of Order.
See, I'd be cool with that. I think right in here, it feels like it's almost like when someone's doing a speech and then it snoozes in the middle.
Kind of the down and dirty, and then the binder is-
Okay.
Kind of feels like the Robert's Rules part would be good in an appendix, rather than within the main body of the handbook.
Okay.
To me, that's how I feel. So whether the appendix is electronic, I would be comfortable with that. But if you'd rather have it in paper, that's fine.
I think that's absolutely a good idea, because you're right. Some people do prefer paper, and some people do want to highlight or make notes. And that allows the ability to do that. But you could also, when you do that, because some people do like to look at it online, you could have this in its own place with the website, or a website with it, so that either/or is available. But I agree that I feel like, it's almost like you're going through and all of this is making sense, and then it's almost like screeching halt of pages that are long and kind of monotonous to get through.
Yeah. So you can do that, that's easy.
The part about check school department email regularly, I think I would be in favor of taking that out of responsibilities on the first page. Because all those things, those are responsibilities that are also things that we vote on.
Yeah.
We don't, you know, checking emails is just-
Yes. It should be the norm.
I think it should be under norms, which is something that we should remind ourselves if that's-
So I'll say keep.
Another thing I noticed, and I don't know why I didn't mention this when we gave you feedback originally, because I noticed it, but it's two little things. And I think you mentioned it, the meeting time, it used to be six-thirty that we started, so the end time was eight-thirty, because we didn't want to go over two hours. And it still says eight-thirty in here. That's on page-
That's a big catch. Oh yeah, right here, page eight.
Yeah, on page eight. And then, also on page eleven, on the calendar for August, it has, it lists August thirteenth as a workshop, but it's actually-
Yep.
And I think because we took out the workshop from July-
Yes. No, that's good.
The draft that you emailed us is very similar to this. Under additional comments, there was, I'm gonna, you asked, there was a question. "Should we include a process for board members visiting schools?" And that's not on the printed one you gave us.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
And I think that's something we obviously would need to talk about.
Is there something already, a policy or procedure, do you know?
Not that I've seen. I think the MSMA-
Yeah, I think-
Has something, I can bring that to policy.
Mm-hmm. And there might be something in the MSBA handbook.
Yeah.
But yeah, certainly we can check out and see what other schools do, so-
I think that's a fairly good idea.
What's in our book that was given to me was a format as to what the normal, what visiting a school looks like as a board member, and to be respectful and ba-ba-ba-ba. But there are no, there are no rules about us visiting a school.
So like, no procedure or anything?
No.
Okay.
So it'd be great if you wanted to bring, look it up and bring it to policy and-
Yeah. Sounds good.
And something I had mentioned. Obviously, I did not do a good job when I did my markings, and I may have made some. But I wonder if, under school board responsibilities, it should also be included, considers expulsions.
Oh yeah. It definitely should.
I forgot about that.
It definitely should.
We haven't had to have that.
Thank God. I just, see, that's one of the, I think I have like PTSD from my very first school board meeting.
We had a lot of expulsions that one year.
And it was like, it was very intense, because I was, I didn't feel like I was-
Definitely should be out of there, absolutely.
And I think it would be really good to have, like, do we have, I know we have expulsions are in our, like, the big book. Is there a particular policy that should be, that we should be referring to there, so that people can like acquaint themselves? You don't even have to put it in this, but maybe put it next to the number, the letter number combo next to it.
I don't know that it's, I'll look, but I don't think it's for. I think it's more for like us when we can consider or move towards, but I'll look.
Okay. I think otherwise, it's in the big, the whatever it was.
The MSBA.
Yeah, the MSBA, so maybe even like a page number next to it or something. Refer page whatever.
Yeah, but definitely should be in there.
Do we have the time of year that we review the superintendent's review, evaluation?
Yeah, that's in my packet that we did.
Okay.
What time of year that's in there. Yeah, it's in line with the law.
Okay.
For when you have to contract.
Should that be on here then, too? Evaluates?
It's on here, hire and evaluate superintendent.
Oh, that, hire and evaluate, Beth, right there. I saw higher, and that was it. Apparently, my brain shut off after that. Thank you, Amy, for teaching me how to read this evening.
This only lists two committees as standing committees, but we actually have more standing.
Right, so that italics part was the draft we had.
Page twelve thirteen.
It was the draft we had, it was the language for how, if we wanted to list them out, we could.
Okay, so this is just an example of- Okay, it's just an example of on the list.
And I didn't get any feedback about that. So under, on page twelve, if you want to look at where she's looking. So starting on page eleven, we have policy BDE listed out. And so our stuff goes all the way until the italics. And then the italics was what had been recommended. If you remember, I put italic stuff in that I wasn't sure if we wanted or not. And so that is actually language from Yarmouth.
Okay.
And we just changed all of Yarmouth to Ellsworth for now. And because honestly, some of this stuff isn't even what we do.
Yeah, so I say, this doesn't-
So the question is, in our policy, we don't outline the purpose and what each committee does, and make lists and all that stuff. Theirs did. And so when we talked at our last policy committee, we talked about, "Do we want to revamp this policy or not?" So as of right now, for me, the italic stuff would come out until we change policy. And then anytime we update, I think it's important to say, anytime we update any of section B of our policy manual, this would have to be updated to make sure that it was in line with, and that we would replace that tab in your binder.
So personally, I think it would be good to review that policy. I don't, I don't think it's like oppressing, like, obviously, more important matters come first. Exactly. But I do think, so like, one of the, one of the first questions, one of the first questions were asked as a new board member, is what committees are you interested in serving on? And I think that that would be very beneficial for a new board member to be able to, and even a current board member to be like, "You know, I think I know what this committee does, but I've never been on it, so I want to make sure, you know, that I understand." So I think it would be good to have it, but again, it's not like one of those things that it's like, "We better be having a first and a second read before a new board member potentially comes on in November." Because it's not a priority.
My, my recommendation for now would be to take the italics out completely. Keep our policy as-is, and then if we update that policy or any other policies, we just make a change to this.
Okay.
And then I would insert our subcommittee meeting calendar after reorganization in November. If any, I don't want to set a calendar and then-
And have somebody not be able to do that.
Yeah, and committees change and-
Even if we do, it's a six months out would be helpful.
I'll insert it, yes. Yeah, once we reorganize in November, that's when I would insert the calendar there. So then people, once we agree as a committee what those dates are, we need to make those public anyway. And so we could publish those public on the Facebook and website and in the handbook. We could insert that in.
So page twelve, establishing functions of standing committees. We have in here that the board chair is to appoint to the committees. However, what we don't have in here is that all, you know, it says throughout our book over and over again, "We are all to be treated equal," et cetera, et cetera. And it says that over and over again. However, if we are not distributed amongst the committees equally, then we are then therefore not equal. And it has come to my attention that we do have a very unbalance of who is, who is serving where and how much.
So this is our policy, and so that's why it's written this way on here. So if that's an issue, we'd have to raise that at the policy.
This is, you know, we're talking about our, our, this is something that we should be talking about as a group. When we're talking about, you know, our handbook and how things should be run, that is definitely something about how this district should be run.
Right, but what she's saying, Abby, is that right now, this is the policy as it stands. So it would have to come to us in policy committee first, and then once it's changed-
In the same way that we're making amendments here now, I would think that this would also be something that we could, this seems like an appropriate time and place to discuss this. I mean, we, this is, we are on the topic.
It's not an appropriate time and place, because this as-is is the policy that's already approved. So we have to leave it as-is until it goes to policy committee. And then, once it goes to policy committee, then it comes back first read, and then second read, and then once it's changed, then we would update it in here. But for now, this is the policy as it stands.
And I would think if you wanted it to be potentially adjusted and changed before reorganization in November, you would want that to be a top priority in your very next policy.
I would, I would think that it would be something that we should discuss collectively, is, you know, before we even can get back.
Well, first, it would have to go to policy. That's the whole point of having committees, right? So the policy committee will do the work.
Yes and no.
And then it goes to the big group for discussion.
I think in this one instance, it would, it would be better discussed here.
Well, there's a purpose for all of our committees that we have, and that's the purpose of the policy committee, is to do the hard work and then bring it back to the full board. Because when you have five people working on a policy, it could, we could be here all night long.
We could be, but this, I don't, I don't see the potential for us being here all night long, first of all. Second of all, I think it is very cut and dry, like, equal is equal or it's not.
I think the, you know, I hear you, Abby, in that, you know, you believe that it would be good to have a discussion. And I think even if we did have a discussion, there would be no actionable thing that we could do this evening, so it would still have to go back to policy to have it actually be written and approved in policy before it came back here.
But I think, I think the input from all five is important. Like, why would we even go to do that if the input wasn't there?
Well, if it comes down to like this year's amount of committees and the amount of people that are on them, I am probably the one that threw off the committees, because I could not commit with my type of work schedule to being on multiple mornings, afternoons, and evenings on many. So upon saying that, signing up, I said what, which ones I would be interested in, gave that to Kelly, but said, "For this year," hence, I know none of this, and you guys have been here how long? I couldn't do it. So I said, "Put me on one." She gave me one of my choices. So I guess if I'm the one that threw them off, I'll try to do something different than next year. No, no, I'm just saying, but I mean, but I know it is. And so saying that, it's, I can do-
Actually, it's not. Because honestly-
Other things, but I just need, it's the timing, it's tricky.
And honestly, Bev, I, I am in a very similar vote to you. I have, you know, an insanely chaotic schedule. So like mine, for me, for me, it would be extremely difficult if we all had the exact same number of committees, because it is really, I, I don't want to be sitting on a committee and then not be able to-
Well, and to be transparent, that is what happened. Like, we had agreed and picked, so that everybody knows, we had agreed and picked, or, and a date for one of the committees that you were on.
Yeah, and I just couldn't.
And it just didn't work, and those were the dates we had set, and all the calendars were set around it. And so, things were moved around to try to accommodate that, because I would say it was the right thing to do, based on the situation you were in.
Absolutely, and, and it wouldn't have been fair for me to stay on that committee and not be able to do the work that it needed to have done to it.
Well, and I'm trying not to be selfish about it either and throw other people. I'm like, "Oh, I don't have time, but you make it." Like, that's not what, I'm not trying to do that either. But I mean, if it takes all day on Monday, my day that I can do it, all right, sign me up. As long as everybody else can do it, I'll be on however many on Monday. Because like, that's my day off, and I can do, but I mean, that doesn't mean that that works for everybody.
However, when those committees cannot be fulfilled, when they had to be reassigned, they were not reassigned equally. That's my point.
So Abby, we're in the process right now of updating the policy regarding committees, right? I mean, we talked about that at our last policy committee meeting. So why don't we wait until after we determine what committees are even going to be existing and when they're going to meet, and then have this conversation?
Because equality has nothing to do with really how many committees or what committee's next. This is a matter of, either we're going to be going forward, we're going to put in here that we are, we are going to hold us to the standard of being treated equally, or we're not.
I, I hear what you're saying, too. I think we talked about it in policy, because we'll have to change the policy. If that's something that you guys decide that you want to add to the policy, we'll do that. Because it's Monday, our meetings are Monday, because of, which I can't believe it's already here. But our committee meetings are Monday, because of the holiday. And so we can discuss that Monday, and then depending on, if we get that policy done, it could come to first read on October tenth for that meeting. Because if that policy was on the list, based on our last meeting and your feedback, that policy is on the list to be reviewed on Monday.
And are we thinking, like, due to some of the changes that we've made amongst the schools and whatnot, that we're going to create different committees, or no, just reconfiguring?
I brought it up, because at a superintendent's training that I had, one of the most veteran, most respected superintendents does the new superintendent's training. And he was very clear with us that they have two committees in his school department, and that's it. And he said, "If you have five to seven committees, you are overextending yourself, and you're going to be meeting to death, because all you're going to be doing is scheduling these meetings and managing these meetings and all the documents and posting." And he said, "So go back to your boards. If you have even four or more committees, go back to your boards and have a conversation about that, because people need to decide how to best use your time in that superintendent's role, because the job continues to get larger and larger and larger."
Yeah.
And so I, Nikki and I took that feedback and were like, "We have five." So we brought it to the policy committee to talk about, do we need to keep the five or not? And we started that conversation with the understanding that we would bring the policy back again in October to talk about.
Right, and I think another challenge to that is, we are a five-person board, and if we do scale back to two or three committees, you could only have two board members per committee, or it's a quorum. And so in that case, it wouldn't, it just wouldn't be equitable unless you, you know, someone serves a three-year term as on the board, and one year you're on one committee, one year you're on the other, and then the last year you're on none, so like a rotating.
And based on our conversation, I don't see our, I see us keeping the five, but I see us maybe changing the wording that says, "Each will meet every month." Because there are some committees that don't need to meet every month, in my opinion. And I think Abby and Kelly agreed. Now that we're getting into it, and we are meeting every month, I will say, it's a lot. It's a lot, and it's great, we're getting stuff done. But at times, there's stuff that's being duplicated. And to me, there are some things that should just come to the full board. And so some of this equality stuff would be maybe handled if some stuff didn't have to go to committee first. Because I think what happens at times is, some of you, and I don't want to speak to any of you, but I think it's hard sometimes, because you talk about stuff in committee, and so there's this, maybe this feeling of, well, they heard it first, and they got input first, and then boom, it's here for us to vote on. And so maybe it's a matter of me communicating differently with everyone, so everyone feels like they have an opportunity. Because that is something we're finding, right? Okay, this went to this committee, it got voted on, can we just put it like the facilities? Like, can we just get that done, or does it really have to wait for the full board? You know, a lot of, a lot of school departments don't have that committee. And with all the work we've had to have done, it's been awesome to get stuff moving, but it's also held us back at times, too. It has slowed things down, too. And so we've talked a lot about that, that sometimes maybe things just need to come to the full board instead of just the committee.
And I think too, you know, the fact that, the fact that as long as we keep meeting regularly, whether that's every other month, whether that's quarterly, whether that's monthly, you know, whatever, that as long as we're meeting regularly, we're building an agenda. And I mean, I think that it's a good, it's good to be at the point where it's potentially difficult to set an agenda, because you've taken care of the things for the time being. Because when we started this, every agenda was this long, because we hadn't been meeting regularly.
Well, and I think too, you know, we talked about this this summer at our leadership retreat with the board and administrators, like, trying to build trust amongst both groups. And so it may be that the, this office of the superintendent in continuing to rebuild trust between the office and the board has to communicate more on some of the bigger things that may affect you all, even though they may go to a specific committee, so that you're aware of stuff. And that may help, too. Because I do think that is part of it, is making sure that there's trust between my office and the five of you, that you all feel like you've been hurt, too. So that, that I think is important, too, and will hopefully continue to build over time as well. Anything else?
Should we put on here a little bit more about what we want our workshops to look like? We don't have a lot in there.
Differentiating between the two, you mean? Or maybe an explanation even of what the difference is?
Yeah, I'm generalized, especially for somebody new. Because it worked, I will say, the workshops in the, you know, I'm going into, I've been here five years next month. And in five years, it has gone all kinds of directions. So it's, I think it would be good to have some consistency, because we have to look ten years down the line. I mean, it needs, it just, it, we, and once, it has a lot to do with like utilization of our time and whatnot, like-
Yeah. Like, next month, it's the audit.
Right.
We're going to have to do the audit report, because by law, we have to. And to not take time out of- And to not take time at a board meeting when our agendas are already so busy and long. So it's more that like educational, informative stuff that we don't need formal action on. But maybe to explain that on here.
Yeah. I don't wanna see a book club again.
Yeah.
And I want that in writing.
Hmm. Examples. Okay, gotcha.
Thank you for making this happen.
You're welcome.
This is good.
I love, I said, I did not realize that not everyone got that nice little folder and handout, like, god.
Yeah, we can, we can bring. We can bring that back.
That was beautiful.
I think that's fantastic.
All right, so we can make some more of these changes, and I can send them out, um, for you to look at again.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Awesome.
Is that all we have?
Cause next one's gonna be the audit, it will probably not be this short. Bring a snack.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, thank you. All right.